The House will come to order. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, this is the Loon motion. Mr. Speaker, I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following House file herewith returned as amended by the Senate in which amendments that concurrence of the House is respectfully requested. House File Number Two, An Act Relating to Education Finance. The message assigned Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate. Loon moves that the House concur in the Senate amendments to House File Number Two and that the bill be repassed as amended by the Senate.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Loon, to explain the Senate
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Yes, there were two amendments added to the E-12 bill, one very technical in nature. There was repeal of some sort of obsolete language on an online IEP system. We had part of it, the repealer language, in the original bill, but there was another section that needed to be added. So that was one of the amendments. And the other had to do with the Crosswind School. It's going to be conveyed to the Department of Administration for sale, and so we needed to have a little money there for the Department of Administration to do the work, to prepare that process. So that $162,000 was added for that purpose, and those are the only two changes. Other than that, the bill is exactly as it left the House floor. And again, I would very much appreciate your support. Thank you, and I would very much appreciate your support. Before we go to that, and I won't belabor this process, but I neglected to make some very important thank-yous when we were debating this bill in the wee hours of the morning. And, you know, I think anyone who serves in this body knows that we are nothing without the very fine staff that support us in those efforts. And it has just been such a privilege to work with all of the staff, both partisan and nonpartisan, as part of the education team, and they really are a team. We have worked so well together. So first, and I just want to thank Senator Nelson and her staff. I know she thanked them by name on the Senate floor, so I won't do that. But again, you know, it's been a very difficult and trying period for Senator Nelson with her personal life, with her father passing away, and so that's presented some challenges in terms of timing and working through things. But I just want to thank her and her staff so much for carrying forward and her commitment to the education of Minnesota's children. We've worked through all that, and we've produced a very, very good bill. I think we can all be pleased with that it is bipartisan, it has bold reform, it has adequate and robust funding. So with that, I want to thank our incredible staff. I'll start with the CA for the House Education Finance Committee, Harry Kennedy; our policy GOP researcher, Amy Roberts; the CA for the Policy Committee, because Representative Erickson and I and her staff, we have worked hand in glove in all of these education issues. We are a team. So thank you, Andrew Hassick, and to the CA for the Policy Committee and Representative Erickson for her incredible partnership and everything she brings to our efforts. Amy Roberts, our researcher; my committee legislative assistant, Doreen Kynes; our amazing nonpartisan staff, I just can't say enough good things about these people, Tim Strom, Christina Para, and Emily Adrianes, our fiscal analyst; our pages, Franklin Berg and Emma Weese; and Kevin, I promised I would not forget you this time. I forgot you in committee, I'm so sorry, but Kevin Baer, our amazing reviser. He is a rock star, thank you, Kevin; and DFL researcher, Mars Beltrandi-Ehruguis. So thank you all, staff. You are valued and appreciated more than you will know. So with that, members, those are the two changes, and I hope you will again support our great E-12 finance bill.
Any discussion on the Senate amendments? Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the call of the House be lifted.
Representative Peppin moves that the call of the House be lifted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. Any discussion on the Senate amendments on the motion to concur to House File Number There being no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to concur with the Senate amendments say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and the House, excuse me, the clerk will give the bill its third reading as amended by Senate.
Third reading, House File Number Two, as amended by the Senate.
Third reading as amended by the Senate. Any further discussion on the bill? Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. Murphy M. votes aye. There being 76 ayes and 55 nays, the bill is repassed as amended by Senate and its title agreed to. Recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I move that House Rule 150 be suspended so that the House may meet past midnight.
Representative Peppin moves that the House be allowed to meet past midnight. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Mr. Speaker. I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file herewith transmitted. Senate File Number One, An Act Relating to the Operation of State Government. The message assigned Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number One, An Act Relating to the Operation of State Government. Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Anderson S. moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number One be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Anderson, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is my motion, that is to take up the state government finance bill.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number One.
Second reading. I recognize the member from Hennepin, the bill author, Representative Anderson, who will explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, before you have the omnibus state government finance bill, included in this bill are several different provisions. I want to highlight some of the main themes from this. As you know, as part of the State Government Finance Committee, we have purview over the Veterans Division and the Military Affairs Division. So I'm going to start out with them and some of the funding provisions that we have in here. Very proud to say that tonight that we have part of this bill is money for the Vets Journey Home Program. $700,000 goes to that. This is a program that helps vets that are struggling in finding homes. It was offered by Representative Bliss, and very proud of having that provision in this bill. In addition, we have the expansion of the G.I. bill that Representative Frankie offered and did a good job on carrying this legislation and providing $200,000 for that. We also have Chair Detmer's provision dealing with the Vets Defense Project at $500,000. This is helping vets that unfortunately, due to possibly post-traumatic stress syndrome, that they have been a part of the court system, and it helps to provide those courts with training so that they can recognize when someone is suffering from PTSD. In addition to this, we have the Duluth Cemetery. I know that was Representative Olson's bill that has funding for that at $1 million and ongoing, so we make sure that we have those operations taken care of. And then we also have in this bill, I think this was Representative Howes' provision, this is dealing with the military tuition reimbursement and enlistment, and we provide $8.4 million for that to Military Affairs. And then also, we have Representative Howes' bill dealing with burials of our veterans and helping out those spouses that are struggling with the expenses of paying for it when their loved one, who has served valiantly, unfortunately fell on the battlefield. So we provide some assistance to them. Those are some of the financial highlights. I'm going to mix in a couple of policy with financial highlights going forward. I think you will notice, I want to just point this out, members, that the bill is smaller, and that's because we took out about 41 pages of a MMB policy provision that was lengthy. So that's why the bill is smaller. We took out those 41 pages from MMB, their policy provision that they asked for. But we also have as part of this bill, the Legislative Budget Office that Representative Vogel carried. We now in the legislature will have our version or our fiscal notes that are prepared for an entity that's under our oversight, and I think that will be helpful for us in getting an accurate picture about what things cost here at the legislature. And I want to say thanks to Representative Vogel for championing this. I think this will give us more accurate and greater access to information when it comes to the financial decisions that we have to make here at the state. You will also note that in this bill, we have Murph, we're saving the state of Minnesota in the tails, $20 million on the Murph provision, and reducing the share that the state has to pay for that. I think that's a great fiscal change that we have as part of this bill. And then in addition to that, we also added language on base budget reporting. I think one of the struggles that we have in working with the agencies is getting an idea of what their true base budgeting is, and so there's going to be a report to us. Again, this is about transparency, this is about getting us better information so that we can make good decisions when it comes to financial management of state funds. You guys have heard me talk many times, too, about severance packages. You heard the story in September when severance packages were issued. One individual had only worked for the state for six months and was able to walk away with an $18,000 severance package. We make sure we address that and that the language is crystal clear in statute that this cannot happen and protects the taxpayers' money on that. We also have a provision in this bill dealing with gain sharing. In the 2011 session, the legislature then had passed a legislation that established a gain sharing program to incentivize our state workers to share their information on how we can make government run more efficiently. Unfortunately, that program was not being followed, and they weren't, they're supposed to have a dollar-for-dollar cost savings on this, and that wasn't being done at all. So we're making sure that that program is followed with the intent that the legislature passed in 2011. We also have Representative Zkowsky's bill on the C-Gip opt-out. This allows state employees that if they have an option to find, if their, say their spouse, for example, has insurance somewhere else and they can get it for less going that route, that provision is in this bill, and it saves the state about $4 million. We also have in here Representative Runbeck's bill on doing an OLA, an Office of the Legislative Auditor, report on Met Council transit, and that's part of this bill. Representative Tammy Tice has her legislation in here dealing with the sex trafficking issue in Wake Park, so we have this as part of the legislation. We have also in here some reforms to the state auditor office. So in 2013, the state auditor was changed from having the funding coming out of the general fund and then into a special enterprise fund. We've changed that back to the general fund just to have greater oversight and transparency in how those funds are being used by the state auditor, so we made that change. We also said that for counties that have certified public accountants doing their books for them, they have the option to follow industry standards and use those when they're providing their data on their audits that they perform. Also, for the state auditor, we ask that the state auditor report on legal expenses so that we know how funds are being used and that they're not coming out of the pension division that she oversees. Other things that are part of this bill, we have Representative Regina Bar's reform for the lottery. This is making sure that 18-year-olds are not purchasing lottery tickets. And then the healthy eating provision, that's mine, that's part of this bill that I championed as to make sure that people have access to healthy foods, and it's also helping Minnesotans to support our Minnesota-grown products here in the state. Another transparency provision that we have in this bill, it's policy-oriented, is regarding agency transfers. We saw in the committee that a lot of agencies were moving money from one agency to another. They now are going to be required to report to the legislature so we have a better idea of why they're shifting money, or not maybe necessarily why, but that we can see that, and then we'll be able to ask better questions of why are these transfers taking place, and maybe we need to adjust things here at the legislative level. We also have in this bill Representative Erin Murphy's provision on the ICE Palace that is going to be constructed on the Capitol lawn. That's part of this legislation. It was policy provision put in the Ways and Means Committee. And then just overall, this has a host of transparency policy provisions in this bill to make sure that we can do our jobs well and that it's open and accessible to the public. And then the last item that I want to highlight is, in the Senate, they added some provisions dealing with the omnibus liquor bill. It's not the full omnibus liquor bill that Chair Hoppe had authored, but it's certain provisions, and just want to highlight a couple of those. Now you will be able to, cocktail rooms can be open on Sundays without food. The Vikings Training Facility has a liquor license. I'm sure that'll come handy, in handy after some games. I'm champagne, of course, I'm sure. But on top of that, you also have, the city of St. Paul will have the authority to issue a liquor license here at the Capitol, which after this week might be helpful as well. And then, let's see, what else? Oh, we've got licenses for the Super Bowl and the ICE Palace that we have here at the Capitol, too. I want to clarify, it is the ICE Palace, not castle. We just, the legislative intent is palace. There's a big brouhaha on that as well. And then we increase off-sales cap at brew pubs and small breweries from 500 to 750 barrels. So those are the provisions that I want to highlight from that piece, and with that, members, I stand for any questions, and I ask for your support.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number One.
Third reading. Discussion on Senate File Number One, the member from St. Louis, Representative Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to make sure credit gets where credits do. I do not, I'm not carrying a bill that is in the state government finance.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Teason.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So one thing I understand is that the Data Practices Commission is extended in this bill, and I was just wondering if Representative Scott would yield for just a minute.
She will yield. Representative Teason.
Thank you. I'm glad that that's happened, and it's unfortunate that the Data Practices Omnibus Bill wasn't passed, and I understand there's lots of reasons for that. But I just wanted to make sure that the Data Practices Commission Task Force is going to continue with the language that was in the omnibus bill to look at the Data Practices Act and the open meaning law and how that might apply to the legislature, and come back next year with some recommendations.
The member from Monocca, Representative Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for that question, Representative Teason. We'll be looking over a lot of different subject matters over the interim. I can't promise that we'll have a report, a full report, done by the end of the year, but that is one issue that we will be looking at. Well, we'll be starting, I think, one of the first things we'll do is look and see what other states are doing, and kind of go from there.
Representative Teason.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate that. I do think it's a really important issue for us, and over the last, you know, several years, dating back a long time, you know, our legislature has struggled with transparency issues. You know, we've seen it this year, but certainly that's not the first time. And I think taking those issues seriously about how we conduct ourselves and making sure the public has access and that how we're operating is open so that people can weigh in gets us to the best result. And I also hope that we can look at some of the issues that were raised about access for people with disabilities to documents and other things, which has been an issue that we've also struggled with in the legislature, and truly is an openness in government issue. So good luck with your work, and I look forward to seeing the results of it.
The member from Monocca, Representative Bernardi.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I rise in opposition to this bill, and particularly around the elimination of the funding for the staff of the office of the economic status for women. I also just want to say, it's frustrating, you know, as I'm sure you all are, pushing legislation through in the dark of night when the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in on it. We just think we need to pause and resist in trying to move things through that the public hasn't actually had a chance to weigh in on, and my constituents haven't had a chance to weigh in. So I just want to get that on the record, a concern that I have in doing right to Minnesota and making sure that we're not doing errors like what's happened last year when we were pushing things through in the dark of night, and making sure we're doing the best for Minnesota. The part that I'm going to talk about right now is about the office, the economic status of women, which was created 41 years ago, and they were created to ensure that every woman and girl in the state of Minnesota has the ability and opportunity to achieve economic security. This is the only entity in that we as legislators get that provides us a broad range of public policy issues and the analysis on them as they relate to the economic status of women. This helps us to enact laws that create more of a level playing field for the women of the state of Minnesota. The Office of the Economic Status of Women has done tours around our state of Minnesota, and particularly in greater Minnesota, and what they have found is a number of stories that have helped us as legislators draft legislation to meet the needs of women. When their first tour, they went around and identified that the number-one barrier for women's economic security was transportation. Been trying to raise this issue, that transportation is a women's issue and that we need to address this. And they found stories throughout the state where women couldn't accept jobs, pursue education and job skill training, get their children to childcare, or buy healthy food and affordable food. And in particular, they had difficulty getting access to healthcare and mental health resources. They also found out that, talking to women across Minnesota, that women in particular were crippled by their, more than men actually, by their student debt loans, because after graduation, women often earn less than men and throughout their lifetimes. Molly from Grand Marais, she said that her monthly student loan payment of $600 is the same amount as her mortgage, and she won't finish paying off her loan until she is 48 years old. She said a lot of other women had also said that they don't even feel like they will be able to have children because of the student loan debt that they're carrying. The Office of an Economic Status for Women has also provided us with the data that our median retirement income of Minnesota's older women in our state is just under $18,000 a year, whereas the cost of basic living for our elders is $23,000. A pastor in Thief River Falls shared that he sees a lot of women that go to funerals, who come to the funerals primarily because there is food available to them. And the other work that the office has done that's been very helpful to us, and I know Representative Moran has been a leader on this, is drilling down into the data of women of color and indigenous women in our state, the barriers to economic security they face. Somali women in our state earn 54 cents on the dollar compared to white males. This resource that we have has helped us to draft legislation and to help improve the lives of women. And now frankly is not the time to end the staffing for this position, and that's what this bill does. The office stays in place, but it guts the funding for their staff person, and that's one person. We have a state budget surplus. What would be the reason that we would want to terminate this office? That just goes against Minnesota's values of ensuring that women and girls have economic security and can prosper in this state. So it's important that we vote against this bill. I know the governor has publicly has said that he was opposed to this legislation, and it was even said at a press meeting that he actually wanted to veto any kind of legislation that got into this bill that included this language. So I urge members to vote against this, let's stand up for women in our state and support the values that we want all women and girls in our state to achieve economic security. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Hillstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Members, I'm very pleased that the Senate eliminated the language related to the approval of the contracts. As a member who serves on the Subcommittee on Employee Relations, our members, our staff for state government work very, very hard to negotiate fair contracts, and I believe that the language that has been removed is important to ensure we have good working relationships with our public employees. Members, the liquor provisions that have been adopted in this bill, I'm fine with. I know that I was very outspoken about Representative Hoppe's liquor bill, but I believe all the provisions in the bill have been agreed to.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Lilly.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Just, I mean, to talk just briefly, there's plenty to say, of course. I was on the state government finance, and it's been quite an adventure. There's, I'm sure you've all got briefs, there's plenty to talk about, but I'm just going to talk briefly on this, on one provision related to, Representative Vogel and Representative Runbeck and myself were appointed recently to the Amateur Sports Commission, and for whatever reason, last session we approved $10 million for switching Zambonis from propane to electric, you know, so that, it's just kind of a little thing, about $10 million was appropriated in Senator Metzen's name, and about $3 million was put out, and $7 million was put out, and apparently you need it, there wasn't any tails or anything, so it's not a big get, but it's kind of the principle of it, and it's just, it's a little bit sad, and it wasn't, and it really is about safe arenas around the state. It isn't like in the metro, or, I mean, it is all over. So I was disappointed, it was kind of a, also in a, kind of the honorable thing to do for Senator Metzen as well, so.
The member from Washington, Representative Detmer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I know the Chair Anderson did speak briefly about some of the veterans and military affairs legislation that we have in this bill, and I just want to make sure everybody is aware what you're going to be voting for or voting against on this important bill. In terms of the military affairs, there's the maintenance training facilities that we're supporting and funding, the enlistment incentives that we have in military affairs. And then the veterans affairs, we have the Veterans Program Services, the Veterans Service Organizations. Everybody has, American Legions, VFWs, all the different veterans. There's nine veterans organizations that you would probably have around the state and in your communities. They get funded through this, the state government finance. Also, the Minnesota Assistant Council for Veterans, that's the MACV, they provide a lot of things for homeless veterans, clothing, places to live. These are important things that are covered with MACV. The Honor Guards, all the Honor Guards that are supported The Honor Guards, all the Honor Guards that are supported through this is through the state government finance. Military, also the Minnesota GI Bill, funding comes for that. The Gold Star Program, if you have Gold Star families, families who have lost somebody in, in our wars, we have funding for them, for their programs. The County Veteran Service Officers, I'm sure most of you get questions about veterans issues, and you contact your county service officer in your county. All 87 counties have county service officers, or some have three, four, like Anoka County has five. You also have Veterans Journey Home Program and the Veterans Healthcare. Our five veterans' homes are funded through this, this committee. So ladies and gentlemen, think about what you're going to do with your vote on state government finance. Thank you.
The member from Carver, Representative Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members, I have a number of people to thank here for the omnibus liquor bill, the provisions that are in here, starting with the Speaker and the Majority Leader. They have heard from me, I can't even tell you how many times I bugged them about this, and they were really, really good to work with, with our leadership staff and the, and the Majority Leader and the Speaker. I would also like to thank Senator Gazelka, Senator Dames, for instigating the changes that we had to make sure that we have all of the, the licensing issues. And then all of the members here that worked on this, I'm not going to name everybody because everybody, not everybody, many of our members came and talked to me about individual provisions, or even if they didn't have a provision in the bill, a lot of people talked about it. It's not everything we were looking for early, but there was some, I guess, a lack of clarity on some of these things. We got, the things that we got now, all of the non-controversial things that are in here. And I'd also like to thank Senator Bach for approving this, and mostly Senator Anderson for being the Chair or the author of this year's omnibus liquor bill. Thank you, Representative Anderson. Members, if you have questions about liquor, anything, please refer them to Representative Anderson. Thank you, members.
The member from Dakota, Representative Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Listening to the presentation on the bill, the author talked about studies that are being directed or authorized to the Legislative Auditor. And members, I just want to express some concern that has been accelerating year after year, where studies of research are being directed by the legislature, by the majority, to the Legislative Auditor. Minnesota's Legislative Auditor has had a tradition of being nonpartisan, to being the watchdog, to speaking for the people of Minnesota. And every time the majority, no matter who is the majority, but every time the majority directs the Legislative Auditor to do something, it chips away at that independence and lessens the credibility of the Legislative Auditor. If we keep doing this, no matter who's in charge, and direct studies and research or investigations, we want to have that independence that Minnesotans must be able to rely on to look at the proper spending and the proper function of government. So we keep treading down this path that is not somewhere where Minnesota should be going. And regarding our Legislative Auditor, we have a process and should be following it.
The member from Anoka, Representative Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the bill's author, Representative Anderson, yield to a question, please?
She will yield. Representative Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Anderson, one of the things that is talked about a lot across the nation and across the world these days is cybersecurity. And I'm just wondering, I know the governor had a top priority of, of some funding for cybersecurity to protect our data systems here, and I'm just wondering what the status of that is, because I see it's not in the current bill.
Representative Anderson S.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Representative Scott. During this process of negotiations with the Governor's Office, though we didn't have it as part of our original bill, one of the offers that we gave to the Governor's Office in this whole process was to fully fund the Minute request at $26 million and some change. So we had fully funded it, however, the Governor's priority was to use that money instead for the operating adjustments. So you'll look on the spreadsheet and you'll see that comes to $26 million. So they took the money from, that we had offered on the cybersecurity, and instead used it for the operating adjustments for each of the agencies. And they didn't provide funding for the cybersecurity anywhere else in their offers.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Johnson S.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the bill members, the State Government Finance Bill has definitely improved from its initial appearance here on the House floor. We know, as was mentioned, the, the agencies and boards are, are fully funded, as they should be, and that, that is what we like to see. The problem is, that was just referenced before I got to speak, is that in fact, the private data of Minnesotans have been put to risk. And this is a decision that the GOP and the state government finance folks on your side, they all have decided in terms of not funding the request for cybersecurity. Here's a headline, folks, from last week in the paper, "Ransomware Attacks Ravaged Computer Networks in 150 Countries." And this, of course, included the United States. 100,000 computers were shut down worldwide, hospitals, banks, power companies, government agencies. And members, keep in mind, this is the, the second request to fund cybersecurity. Last by any, we had a similar request, but that also fell on deaf ears. So we're really attempting to address an important issue, but it's not, not being heard. Last year, the Major General Richard Nass from the, the National, General National Guard made the following statement, "What keeps me up at night is the thought of a future devastating cyber incident in Minnesota. Cybersecurity is a matter of public safety, and that is why it is a priority for the citizen soldiers and airmen of the National Guard." Members, cybersecurity is a serious issue. In South Carolina, 3.7 million people had their social security debit card, credit card numbers impacted. At the federal level, there's another 21 million that were impacted in a recent security breach. In Minnesota, in our own court system, our website was shut down for 10 days due to hacking. In Minnesota, members, citizens, private data is at risk at a time of ongoing threats and cybercrime. It's wrong that this matter was not addressed in this bill.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Anderson S.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And Representative Johnson, as you just heard me inform Representative Scott, we had offered to fully fund the cybersecurity request of Minute at $26 million. The Governor's Office came back and said, no, we want to spend that money on agency operating adjustments. And they spent all $26 million of it and zeroed out the Minute request. So just want to make that clear on the record. And folks, I'm excited about the Office of Economic Status of Women. What we are doing here is having the legislature have greater oversight and input and involvement in that issue. I think that's very important, because I've offered some legislation that is going to be using that commission to do some work. So we're going to have some heavy lifting to do here in the next legislative session. But with that, members, I have neglected to thank some very important people in this process. You know, putting together a bill isn't just one member or just even the committee, it's a whole host of staff and committee members. First and foremost, I want to thank my Chair, Detmer, on his work on veteran issues. He is the number one champion for veterans here in the House, I think. I also want to thank my Senate counterpart, Mary Kiffmeyer, in working on this issue together. It was a great experience. But lastly, I, or a couple other folks too, the commissioners, you know, the state government finance, we have a lot of commissioners that we work with throughout that and agency heads. And so it gets a little trickier than maybe some other committees, because we have so many to deal with, and they all have issues that they feel very passionately about. So I want to thank them and working with them on these issues. But lastly, I just want to give a shout out to some staff people. On the Senate side, we had Amy Stringy, we had Paul Carlson, Kelly Johnson, Kevin Lundin, and Stephanie James. Just appreciate working with them on this bill. But I really want to thank the House staff. I am blessed to work with some wonderful people that are very passionate about doing good things for Minnesotans. We've got Jim Gelman on the DFL side, appreciate his work. For the GOP side, Brian Cook, John Haltquist, Sam Moyer, Matt Garing, our nonpartisan research staff, Helen Roberts, our nonpartisan research staff, and of course, the Revisers Office and the many, many versions of this bill. Really appreciate their patience and their dedication to the state of Minnesota. So with that, members, I just appreciate your support, and I appreciate your time too. Thanks.
There being no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. Clerk will call the roll. There being 99 ayes and 32 nays, the bill is repassed as amended by the Senate and its title agreed to. The member from Hennepin, Representative Carlson L. For what purpose do you rise?
I rise for a point of personal privilege, Mr. Speaker.
State your point to personal privilege.
In a moment, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, but I'd like to give a little background, because I'd like to recognize the passing of a former member, Wayne Seminole. He served in the Minnesota House from 1975 to 1995. He survived by his wife Jane, six children, and several grandchildren, and he was even a great grandfather. Representative Seminole passed away on May 21st. He was a graduate of Dunwoody Institute, a lifelong learner. He was a mechanic for many years and a dedicated public service. Former Representative Seminole arrived in Minnesota as a, arrived as a state representative and served, as I mentioned, for 20 years. He served on local government as a, or in local government as an auditor, and he served in the National Guard. Governor Carlson appointed Representative Seminole as Deputy Commissioner for Duer, and he was the later, or later-appointed Commissioner of the Department of Finance. When he was one in the Minnesota House, he was very well-known for his work when he chaired the Government Operations Committee. He was very well-known for his work on pension legislation and related issues. He was also a very key player when we were dealing with budgetary issues as Chair of the, what we called the Appropriations Committee then. I was fortunate enough to work closely with him for many years, because I chaired one of the divisions of appropriations. He was a great person to work with. He contributed a lot to the state of Minnesota. And so, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to request a moment of silence.
Members, please join me in a moment of silence.
All right, we will see you after the hour. I hope you all have a good one. Good night. Good evening. Good morning. 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 Good evening.[396.12][396.12][S01. The member from Hennepin, Majority Leader Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I move a recess to the call of the chair.
Representative Marquardt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and members. With the majority leader, please yield to a question.
She will yield. Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and representative Marquardt. I don't know, as you know, as you probably know, we're waiting for the Health and Human Services bill from the Senate, and I think we have some work to do on the bonding bill as far as preparing the spreadsheets and whatnot, so I'm not sure.
Peppin moves a recess to the call of the chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion prevails. We are in recess.